It's fun to start off with brief introduction, so if you can let us know who you are and what street you live on, and if there's a topic that you want to make sure that we hit in this meeting, we'll do our best to do that. And maybe you can call out the next person to introduce themselves, because we don't really have a straight line in Zoom. So I'll start. My name is Shira. I'm a town meeting member. I live on Summit Avenue, and I am excited to hear our presentation on green energy. And I'll hand it off to David LaScuie.
I'm David LaScuie, also a town meeting member in this precinct down in Winchester Street, right across from 112 Center Street, precinct nine. It's part of our neighborhood. We're over there probably more than up on the hill these days with all the snow.
And Lisa, next.
I'm Lisa Schatz. I am a new town meeting member of this precinct, and I ran to advocate for more affordable housing.
Okay, Shana, the next person, yes.
She did. Hi, I'm Shana Giora-Gorfin. I'm also a town meeting member for precinct 11. I've been a town meeting member for, I think, nine years now. I am David LaScuie's next door neighbor at 66 Winchester Street. And I think that's about it for my introduction. Let's go to Ann.
Ann, hi, I'm Ann Weaver. I'm a town meeting member since last year. I'm, I guess, up for reelection because it was a one-year term. I live on Mason Terrace between Summit Ave and Lancaster Terrace, and I'm happy to be here. David, David, so many Davids. Cruing House.
Thank you, Ann. I am David Cruing House. I'm also was elected last year to town meeting. I live directly across the street from Driscoll on Westborne Terrace. And I'm super interested in hearing about the reports from Reimagined Policing. David Pollack, just we'll keep the David.
Yeah, we'll go with the Davids. I live on Lancaster Terrace. I've been in town meeting since 2015, I think. And I also currently represent our delegation and our precinct on the advisory committee. Oh, sorry, let's do another David. Hello.
I figured, that's why I unmuted. So I sometimes call myself the other David L because David LaScuie is so active in town and knows as much more up on the policy. I'm also a town meeting member, precinct 11 on the hill. I live on Mason Terrace, directly across from Le Petit, which sadly is closing down, or has closed down, and we fear another McMansion there. But my primary interest in town government started with my involvement leading Climate Action Brookline. And so most of my interest is climate advocacy, but I've learned a lot more from you guys. Thank you. Oh, there are no more Davids. So I see my, do I? Yes.
Thank you, David. Nice to see you. I think of you when I walk around there. And now I've got a few more people on my map when I'm walking around. I'll look to see you guys. I'm down the hill on Center and Fuller Street. But that's my, one of the neighborhoods I walk in, so I want to do part of this. I get the email from Shira all the time. So part of the neighborhood and concerned about the proposed plans for that center communities has for building around here. Thank you. Let me see. Ken, did you speak?
No, I'm Ken Lewis. I've been in town meeting for 12 years. I've lived on Summit Ave for about 30 years, and I work with Kara and others on the Economic Development Advisory Board. So who's next? Boni.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Dyson, town meeting member precinct 11. And I live on Lancaster Terrace. I'm sorry, I've been ill, so I can't speak very well. I'm coughing. And I'm eager to hear the presentation tonight. I'm sorry, I didn't have an active input. I have been off the grid not well for the past couple of weeks. So I'm here tonight, and I'm really interested in hearing a little more about what's going on in the neighborhood. Let me see who's next. Martha.
Martha Gray, town meeting member. I live on the corner of Summit and Jordan. And it's good to see all of you. Jennifer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for pulling this together. And Bonnie, I hope you are feeling better. It's a scary time to be sick, for sure. I've been a town meeting member, I think, for about seven years, maybe a little longer. And I, tonight, am especially interested in hearing about the policing task force. And I have been less issue focused and more process focused as a town meeting member with the handbook and some surveys of experience. And so I am always appreciative of our delegation's deep content knowledge. And let me see, who has not? How about you, Francesca?
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I just was moving around because my pets were annoying me. My name's Francesca Stark. It's really good to see so many of you. I've been, I live in the neighborhood. I live on Westborne Terrace, and I am a fifth grade teacher at the Driscoll School. Taught so many of your children who are now getting older, and sometimes they go by me with a mask, and they're like, hey, Ms. Stark. I'm like, who the hell are you? I have no idea, because they're all tall and gorgeous, and I don't know who they are. But it's really good to see all of you. And so I've been teaching at Driscoll now for, I just found out, because I spoke to the retirement guy to find out how long I've been there. It's been 25.1 years, but I have like five or six more to go in case some grandkids arrive. So I'm there. And as you may or may not know, they're going to be tearing down Driscoll and building another one. And I have just a lot of concerns about the town of Brookline. I haven't come to this meeting before, but very concerned about our school and our school system, and the fact that there's a huge debt, as far as I know. They're cutting things at Brookline High School, Performing Arts, and all these things. And I'm very concerned about what their plans are for the new Driscoll School. One big problem I had was that they didn't put-
If I can just interrupt for a second, we actually have Driscoll on the agenda.
I know. That's why I came. That is why I came.
I just want to make sure that everybody else who's here has a chance to just introduce themselves quickly so that we can keep things moving. So do you want to bounce it to someone, or shall we keep it moving?
Sure, let's keep it moving. Did Barbara, I don't see, I see someone named Barbara. Did you go yet, Barbara?
Nope. Barbara, I was gonna live on Jordan Road, and I'm not a member of the town meeting. I'm just curious. I wanted to listen to you, see what you have to say. I'm especially interested in solar energy. Hi, David. You tried to talk me into, you didn't need to have to talk, didn't need to talk me into it. I got it. So anyway, nice to see you all.
Okay, and Sharla?
I'm Sharla. I'm on Lancaster Terrace, and I've been here 20 years, not a town meeting member. I guess there's a couple of us that aren't. So that's it. How about Larry?
I'm Larry Rothman. I live at the top of Summit Avenue. My wife and I have been here over 25 years. And I just found out about this neighborhood meeting from her, and just wanted to see what was going to be discussed. I've never joined it, but it's great to see you. I only know Barbara. I don't know the rest of you, I think.
Nice to see you, Larry.
Same here, Barbara.
Hi, yeah.
Well, you haven't heard about it before, because it's a new thing that we've been doing. So we're really glad to have you here. Next is Diane, please.
Hi, I'm Diane Sokol. I actually live in precinct five. And, but I'm here tonight at David, one of the David L's requests, but I appreciate both David L's, to talk about Brookline Green Electricity Program, and what everybody can do to participate, and how precinct 11 can have a good participation rate like precinct five. So I will turn it over to Kara.
Hi, my name is Kara Bruton. I do not live in Brookline. I live in West Newton, but have worked in Brookline for about 12 years now, something like that. I'm the Economic Development Director for the town. Work in the Planning Department. And until we fill a position, I'm also doing some of the sustainability work for the town. And that's why I'm here tonight is to join Diane with any questions about the town solar program. And I don't know, Jonathan Golden, did you speak?
Not yet, thank you. So I'm Jonathan Golden. I live on Beacon Street between Summit and Short. Been here 11 years now. I'm also on the Community Engagement Committee of the Commission on Diversity and Inclusion in Community Relations, looking forward to all the items on the agenda this evening. Let's see, Judge Ditkoff.
Thank you. I'm Joseph Ditkoff. I was a town meeting member from 2005 to 2017. I'm afraid bedtime, not my bedtime, but my son's bedtime will take me away from here before too long. But I'm excited to see what I can in the time.
And we have someone named EJD. Want to introduce yourself?
Hi, that's Susan. I'm in the other room. EJD is my son's initials.
I see them.
Hi.
Okay, great. We're glad to have you all here. Shana, did you want to add something?
I was just going to clarify which Susan that was.
Oh, sorry, it's Susan Ditkoff. Sorry, my name is Susan Wolf-Ditkoff. I live with the person who just spoke, who is my husband. I'm on the school committee. I chair the Driscoll Building Project. So if people have questions about that, happy to try to answer them. I also chair the BHS Building Project and the Remote Learning Task Force, which has four panels underneath it. So delighted to see you all. It's great to see so many new faces.
Okay, so we want to get started. Oh.
I was just gonna do a shout out to Joseph for recruiting me to town meeting way back then, about a decade ago. Thanks.
Okay, I'm a little afraid, I'm afraid to unmute my microphone because there's a lot of noise in my house. But we're gonna go, we have a bunch of agenda items, as you know, and-
I believe we actually, I'll take over for a second. It's a little quieter here. My kid's a little older. I think first up, we have a community engagement committee, and Jonathan Golden, you are going to speak on that?
Yes, great. Thank you for the opportunity. And thank you so much for having this meeting. We, on our committee, talk about neighborhood and precincts having meetings like this, and we're really appreciative. And I think precinct 11 is really setting a model for many neighborhoods and having meetings like this. So thank you for this opportunity to share a small bit about the work. So I'll briefly share a little bit of my background, how I got involved in the committee, a little bit about our work, and then happy certainly to take questions if there's time tonight, or you certainly can contact me offline. I've lived in Brookline now since 1999, so almost 22 years. I used to live at 101 Monmouth, so I moved to my current residence in 2010. And one of the ways in which I was interested in this issue of community engagement was around that time, around the time in which I met my wife, we got engaged, got married, thinking about starting a family. And we heard back in 2010, oh, there's a Driscoll School that's going to be renovated or built probably just a few years from now. As all of us know, later in the agenda tonight, that's something still down the road a few months to come. But that idea of what was taking so long was one of the reasons why I was interested in to get more involved, have more information about how decisions are made, how processes work in town. Much more recently, really last year, the death of George Floyd was another moment for me, where I wanted to be more involved in town in some way. And through the encouragement of some neighbors, I decided to look at the boards and commissions available to participate in town. And the one that caught my eye is this Community Engagement Committee, which is a committee of the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. But back in 2019, a town meeting passed a bylaw asking for the creation of a community engagement plan. In a little bit, I'll show you the link with you in the chat of a very extensive community engagement plan. I'm just going to focus on one small part for a few minutes tonight. But certainly happy again to take questions if there's time tonight, or offline with any of you. The goal of this community engagement plan is both for town departments to think about how they're engaging their constituents, residents, to get the lived experience of their own when making decisions. And over the course of the summer through the winter, we had meetings with all the departments in town, from police to fire to Council on Aging, Parks and Recreation, you name it, week by week, trying to find out how are they doing community engagement and making their decisions? What goals do they have for the coming year? How can we help to develop a plan that would continue to have community engagement? Much of the plan that I'll have in the link, we'll say more about that. But the piece I thought I would focus on for tonight more was actually about the other part, which is for residents. What are the expectations for residents about how they can engage more in the community? And there's a section on page two called the Community Bill of Rights. Some expectations that the group is trying to be sure happen so that people can engage in the ways in which they want, whether that's finding out about key decisions, or being more involved in town if they would like to be. So let's see, if it'd be possible for me to share my screen, I just want to share a few quick slides from a PowerPoint that you've got a month ago. And again, it will be very brief, but happy to take questions afterwards. So if I could have permission, please, to share the screen, that would be great.
Working on it. Give me one second.
Yeah.
Um, for some reason. Obviously not letting me let you share your screen. That's strange.
Can you request?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Yes, perfect. Thank you very much. Excellent. Let's see. Okay, so as you can see, this is a presentation I gave a month ago at the Inspo Expo, an opportunity for people to volunteer in town. And again, just a few slides I'll show very quickly. Happy to take some questions. And this is from page two. Again, when I conclude, I will put a link in the chat to the entire plan and show you where you can find this, along with other information. These are key points of what we call the Community Bill of Rights. And the goal of the committee is trying to think about what are ways in which we can help our community members be more involved and have the information that they would like. So one of the rights we believe people should have is to have town information about key meetings and opportunities as they happen. Some of you may be familiar with the town website and its calendar, the ability to get alerts for town meetings. If you're not familiar, I'm happy to guide you, as I imagine any of the town meeting members are as well. So to be abreast of what is happening in the town is one key area. Another area is what does input look like? So whether that's attending meetings, certainly pre-COVID in person, and now in the time of COVID with Zoom, there are easier opportunities and ways to be involved. And whether these are larger meetings that happen, but also smaller ones like this one, to be in neighborhoods, have a chance to voice one's opinion, we think that's of great value, as well as the opportunity to share opinions with town meeting members, and to always receive clear information about what's happening in the town itself. And then to continue to receive time information after the decisions are made. How does one find out afterwards about when a key decision is made? That's something that we are working on. One project to alert you to is that BIG, a Brookline Interactive Group. And some of you may be familiar, if you watch any select board meetings, school committee meetings, other programming that they do, key committees in town. They're working on a website called Civic Brookline, which they hope to launch this spring, which will be another place and a source for some of this information, in addition to the town website. And also to let you know that one of the key goals for 2021 is our committee will be doing an audit of the town website, leading to a redesign of the website, that'll be this fall, early winter. Every three years, the town has the opportunity to redesign the website within the confines of Civic Plus, which is a platform that hosts our website. So certainly, that's something you're interested in. If you have feedback of things you'd like us to look at the website, we're happy to take that feedback. And again, that's what's mentioned here, the second bullet, about updated, accurate, information-friendly websites. We know that's something that's being worked on, and we're starting to partner with key town departments to keep the information up to date, to have answers to questions in a timely way from town employees, something we're working on also. Again, it's accessible information. And finally, so we are a committee broadly of this idea of equity and inclusion. And so our goal is to bring together as many voices as possible in all town discussions and conversations. And so we just want to give that invitation out to that. We hope people feel like they're able to participate in ways that they want to in terms of decision-making, to speak up when it's not working well. And I, along with other members of the committee, are always happy to hear feedback from the public. We meet every other Friday, and you can find that invitation on the town website in the calendar, to talk about our goals for the year, which again include the website. It'll be more of a rollout of this community engagement plan through BIG and other sources. And I'll just conclude now. I'll stop sharing the screen, and I'll quickly put in the chat. If you want to read more about the plan or have more questions, here is a link to the plan itself. And that's the full document, which has a lot of information, especially for town departments helping them to set their goals in this area. And then I'll also just share briefly this link, which is to the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, where you can also find this website, this plan is linked there, a lot of other information. So I'll stop there. And again, happy to take questions. I don't know if there's time now, or certainly can have to do that later. Rothman, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. That was fantastic. And yeah, I think, thanks for being so timely. Do we have any questions directly for Jonathan now? Really appreciate your serving on that committee and sharing about it with us. And I think it's really important work that we're doing for the community. Any questions, comments? Okay, so we'll move forward, then people can ask at the end, or just be in touch directly. Great. So next on the agenda is the Task Force to Reimagine Policing, and Ann Weaver is going to present.
Now I'm not on mute. Hi, everyone. I put together, I like literally threw together 10 minutes ago, a PowerPoint. But so can you share screen?
Should be able to, if you try to do a screen share.
Let me see.
Be enabled for you now.
Let me see if I can make this work. Do you see it? Any?
Not yet.
No.
I see it. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Click the thing at the bottom that says share screen.
Yeah, I did that. I'm sorry. I'm terrible at these things.
You want to just email it to me? I can share it while you start talking.
Yeah, there's, there's two share screens. You got to do a share screen, and then another share screen.
Where's David Cruing House when you need him, right?
No Zoom expert, I'm sorry to say.
All right, Shira, I'll send it to you right now. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I can start.
Yeah, just start as soon as I get it all put up. But go ahead and start.
So, so, hi, so I'm going to tell you about the, well, I don't even see it. Never mind. I'm just going to talk. So last summer, Raul Fernandez, who's one of the select board members in town, put together, presented to the select board that he would like to start a committee on reimagining policing in Brookline. And that was voted on and said that the select board, sorry, I'm still looking for the slide. All right, never mind. The select board approved this new committee to look at public safety in Brookline, reimagining the role of police in Brookline. And at the same time as, sorry? Someone say, all right. At the same time, that his, that his committee got formed, there was also a different committee that was formed that is chaired by Bernard Green, called the Police Reform Committee, who are looking more specifically at reforms that may be needed within the police force. So there's these two separate committees that have been working since last August. One on police reform within the police department, and one on kind of reimagining public safety, what would work for the community at large, what are the needs of the community, what does the community want, what do they think is missing, where are the gaps, so on and so forth. So both of those committees were started last August, I believe. People who were interested in being part of them filled out a small application, did an application process, and members were chosen for both, for both committees. And I've been on the task force. Ours is a task force. Bernard's is a committee, but they're both basically committees. So I've been one of the members of the task force since last August. There are 10 members of the task force plus Raul, who's our chair. So there are 11 members in, in total. And let's see, we have been working. The full task force has been meeting once a week on Fridays since August, every week, to discuss the work of the task force, as well as the work of the subcommittees of the task force, which we created early in the process, I believe in September, to look at different issues around public safety facing Brookline. The, our task force was based on the following tenets. A community holds the power to determine its own approach to community safety, which includes determining if and how police should be part of that approach. There are members of our community in Brookline, and those in our neighboring communities for which Brookline's current model of policing and public safety is not working. The task force is an opportunity to not only rethink our relationship with the police, but also to reconsider how we invest in the long-term well-being of residents and neighbors. Our charge as a task force was by using a data-informed approach to explore, recommend new approaches to public safety and policing in Brookline. So again, we started meeting on a weekly basis on Fridays, and various subcommittees were also formed to look at different aspects of what we determined to be potentially the largest needs in this community. The subcommittees that were formed, there was one formed on community engagement, how to reach out to residents of Brookline, involve them in the process, hear their experiences, hear their perspectives about public safety. There is a, there was a departmental analysis subcommittee that was really looking at police documents and reports, and evaluating them, and coming to conclusions based on what the police reports, annual reports were looking like, who, who the police were serving, who may have been left out. There was a subcommittee formed on the school resource officers, who are police officers who work with the Public Schools of Brookline in various capacities. There was a subcommittee formed on the Walk and Talk Unit. I was on the subcommittee. Walk and Talk is a police unit that specifically serves the residents of the Brookline Housing Authority, the, which are placed all over Brookline. And it's a program that was developed by the police in the early 1990s, specifically to serve the Brookline Housing Authority buildings and residents. And finally, the last subcommittee was on vulnerable people and people in crisis, of which I was one of the two co-chairs. And that was looking at how people who live in Brookline, who are going through mental health-type crises, substance use crises, or are unhoused, specifically how, what needs to happen in order to serve those folks better, so that they get their needs met, and can become more fully kind of functioning citizens in our community. The, the Subcommittee on Departmental Analysis included one task force member, Aton Hirsch, who's a professor at Tufts. And he found out that one of his fellow professors at Tufts was about to send out a survey, survey of public attitudes about the police to the towns of Somerville and Medford. He got us, he got the town of Brookline to be the third town in that survey. We tweaked some of the questions a little bit for Brookline, but basically, it was the same survey sent to Somerville and Medford. And we sent a survey to 25,000 Brookline residents, received a 5.4% response rate. Some of the takeaways from that survey, 77% of survey respondents felt that we needed a civilian review board of the police department, that that should be established. Overall perceptions of the Brookline Police Department were generally positive, but were the least positive for Black and Latinx residents. Residents overwhelmingly did not believe that the Brookline Police Department is effective at holding officers- holding officers accountable for their actions. And Brookline residents had a very strong preference, it was like 80 something percent for social service workers to be responding rather than police to people in the community who are experiencing a difficult situation or crisis. All of our subcommittees have come up with written final reports based on our interviews or research, our hearing, public feedback. I'm not going to get into all of those right now, but I'm happy to share the documents with everyone if you're interested. The the major recommendation that's coming out of our task force is the creation of a new Town of Brookline Department that is currently just as a placeholder name called Brookline Forward. It's a social services department of the town that we don't have currently that would oversee and provide residents with the services and supports that they need to thrive. This department would partner with the Brookline Housing Authority, Public Schools, Senior Center, Teen Center, other local social service agencies. Offices under Brookline Forward would include the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations that Jonathan was just talking about, the Council on Aging and the Office of Veterans Services. And then new offices would also be created for this department, including Youth and Family Services, Immigrant and Refugee Services, and an Economic Equity Department. We're not completely we're looking to the town, to the select board, to town meeting, to the advisory committee to help us figure out the funding for this new department. So that's still in the works. We're thinking it will be funded by municipal dollars, including funds shifted from the police department as well as local, state and federal grants. And that's pretty much what I'm just going to present today. It's just a touch of what we've been doing. We've been working hard on this all year. Our next steps, we will be presenting our recommendations and findings to the select board on March 2nd. So if you're interested in getting a fuller presentation from us, hearing more about it, that might be a time to tune in. There's going to be a public hearing that the select board is going to be hosting on March 17th. And then the select board will be voting on our recommendations somewhere toward the end of March. That hasn't been set yet. I'm happy to take questions. I just wanted to give you kind of a brief overview of what's been happening. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Ann. And you you basically answered my questions about what the next steps were and how people could find out more. So I hope you'll send out the links and the information about those upcoming meetings so people can attend. I saw that Ken had, Ken had a quick question and then.
Sure.
Yes, Ann, how much time is your, or how much focus is your committee giving to recruitment and training of officers?
That would be a, that would be within the purview of the Police Reform Committee. We are not looking at any what's missing from the police department in terms of what their needs to become a better police department. We're looking more at alternatives, other other things that the town can do outside of the police department to better serve our our community. So the Police Reform Committee that's chaired by Bernard Green was looking, is very much looking at at those types of issues. And they will be doing a presentation to the select board. I'm not sure if it's the same on March 2nd as well. I think it might be. I think we might both be presenting that night.
Will you send that around though, Ann, to the rest of the world? We can all follow and attend and.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But it will be on the town calendar as well. If you guys know that you can always go to Town of Brookline Calendar, you put that in Google and it will it will pop up and you'll be able to see what meetings are happening that day. And if you click on it, you'll get the web link and you'll get the agenda and stuff. So there's always that resource as well, but I'm happy to share what I have.
Yeah, I think like like Jonathan was saying, sometimes you need a little push rather than pull, but okay, wait. I'm gonna lie down in one second. I'm gonna lie down one second. I'm just gonna introduce our our guest. This is, this is Abby Gao. She's a guest, but we want to thank David Lusquay for for inviting Diane Sokol and Cara Bruton to talk about Brookline Green Electricity. So we'll hand it off to them and we're really appreciative that you came to our neighborhood for this.
Well, on Zoom, it's not a very long walk to your neighborhood. So I'm gonna share a screen for a quick presentation and I don't see my screen. Hold on a second. There we go. Are you seeing this? Okay, I will put it into full screen mode. And hopefully this will work. I had problems advancing before. Okay, so thanks for inviting us to your precinct 11 Cory Hill Neighborhood Association or forum. We're trying to get the word out about the Brookline Green Electricity Program. I'm just gonna quick you quickly run you through some background of why it's important and how to sign up.
Green isn't working, I don't think, not for me.
Okay, hold on. Let me unshare, do this again.
Or just go back to.
Yeah, I'll, this is the exact same problem I had the other day, so.
It was pretty large as it was.
Yeah, okay, wait a second. Let me go back to Adobe Exit Out. A full screen. It's good to know that you can't do it that way. Okay, sharing is failing. Try this again. Seeing it now, not in full screen?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, so just to set the context a little about the Green Electricity Program, it's important to know about what is causing our climate, climate change issues. And it's really everything that we're doing. Burning fossil fuels in transportation, in agriculture, in industry, in our own homes, cutting down forests, it's all contributing to climate change. There's no one thing that we need to stop. We need to really look at all the sectors. And there's a lot of information in Massachusetts. If we look at the past 25 years, what's been happening to our greenhouse gas emissions over 25 years, you can see that they are reducing. So that's good news. And the biggest reduction is actually in the top blue section, which is electricity consumption. So our electricity network has been getting cleaner and cleaner over 25 years. And we're also using less electricity due to energy conservation programs and energy efficiency programs. We need all of those other colors below to be showing the same reduction in electricity in greenhouse gas emissions. The good news about this is over the same 25 years as our greenhouse gas emissions have lowered and our population has increased, the Massachusetts gross state product has also increased. So people who are saying that conserving energy is bad for the economy, it's not working that way in Massachusetts. So the state has this decarbonization roadmap with four pillars of how we're gonna get to clean greenhouse gas free climate by 2050. So you know, the first pillar is about energy efficiency, reducing consumption. Second, about fuel switching, all sources going to clean electricity. Third one about expanding our clean electricity. Fourth one about carbon sequestration in forests. And so really, the Brookline Green Electricity Program is in this third pillar. So again, by 2050, the state is saying that we need to have all of our electricity emissions zero emissions. So all renewable sources, wind, solar, low impact hydro. There are a few other sources that also go in there. So when you plug in your computer into the wall, that electricity is actually part of one big grid covering all of New England. It's called the ISO New England Electrical Grid. So again, over the past 20 years or so, what's been happening to clean up our grid? You can see the two layers on the bottom, the light gray and the dark gray. That's sort of our dirtiest, most polluting energy sources, oil and coal. And we are doing a good job about reducing those emissions in our electrical grid. The middle bar that I'm interested in, green, is renewables, just increasing slightly and slightly each each decade. And we need to see that growing more. And what's taking up the top, the light blue natural gas, that's unfortunately been increasing. It's cleaner than oil and coal, but still causing a lot of emissions. So Massachusetts has a policy to green our grid. You can see over the course of 35 years or so, you know, the plan is to increase incrementally year by year the percentage of green electricity called the Renewable Portfolio Standard in the electricity supply each year. And in the town of Brookline, because we have this green electricity program that I will tell you the details of since 2017, Brookline has been doing better because we're adding additional green electricity to what is required by the state. So this program that started in 2017 was really a collaboration between the town of Brookline, you know, staff at town hall, town meeting, and then activist groups like Mothers Out Front and Climate Action Brookline. So since the program started in 2017, we went through one contract. We're in the second contract now, started last January, goes through December 2022. So right now, our electricity supplier is Direct Energy and there are four options now, 0% additional green over what's required by the state, 30, 65, or 100% green. Most residents and businesses are at this default 30%. If you take no action when you received a letter in the mail, then you default into this 30%. But this is 30% added to the 18% that's required this Renewable Portfolio Standard by the state. So getting 48% green electricity, almost half. So if you do nothing, that's, you're still doing a pretty good job there. But if you opt up to 100%, then that's a really great job. And in Brookline, we're looking for more people, ah, sorry, ignore my text, looking for more people to get up to 100% green. So since the program started in July 2017, you know, initially, there are a lot of signups and since then, you know, just sort of slowly, gradually climbing up there. We have almost 900 residents and businesses on that 100% green at this point. And looking at all of the programs, the default level and the 100% green and the ones in the middle, since the program started in the middle of 2017, the town has bought procured an additional 127 million kilowatt hours of green electricity. If you want to know what that statistic means, 127 million kilowatt hours is like having 28 football fields covered with solar panels generating green electricity for three and a half years. So in the three and a half years that the program's been running, that to me sounds pretty impressive, what the town is doing with this green electricity. So a lot of people ask, how can I tell if I'm already signed up? So you can either look at your Eversource bill, whether you get a paper bill or an online bill, the information is in both of them. So if you get a paper bill, you need to look at the backside. If it's an online bill, you have to click the arrow to page two. This area that's highlighted in green on the on the backside, it says total charges for electricity. Two important pieces of information, the supplier should say Direct Energy Town of Brookline. And if you're on 100%, this generation rate or charge would be 0.13715. So if your bill has different info, if your supplier says Eversource Basic Service, that means that you're not on the town program yet. It could be a glitch. It could be that you moved recently and haven't been brought into the program. So you can go to the website, BrooklineGreen.com and all the information is there about how to opt up. Or you can also call Good Energy. Good Energy is the town's energy broker who can help help you sign up. If your supplier isn't the town of Brookline, if it's not listed as Eversource Basic Service, that means that you might be on a third party supplier, whether you signed up intentionally or by accident. And again, I'd say go to the website, get the phone number for Good Energy and they can assist you about how you get off of that supplier and onto the towns.
Can you search for letters that people have gotten, like some, there's a lot of been, a lot of solicitations with return addresses in other states that seem to be scammy and confusing people that that's actually, you know, the local green energy?
Exactly. It's very confusing. And what I say is that I know three people, a doctor, a lawyer and a PhD scientist who got hooked into the wrong program. It's very confusing because these letters come in the mail or they're emails and sometimes they're even door to door. People coming and saying that they work with Eversource or that they're doing this for the town of Brookline. But really, the, and some of them are legitimate programs and do have good rates. But it's hard to really, unless you do a lot of research, it's hard to compare what one program to another. And we know that the Town of Brookline program has been vetted by the town, by the town, by the Attorney General or Department of Public Utilities. So that's why we always say in some ways, it's a lot easier to just sign up for the town program. But it is good for people to watch out for all these letters. There's been a wave of them recently. There there will also be letters, if you've moved sometime in the past year and have a new Eversource account number, you will be receiving a letter in the mail from, I think it has the town seal on the letter and it's from our electricity supplier or the broker, Cara could clarify that. So that's one kind of letter that is legitimate and it does have the seal of the town of Brookline. So again, if your generation rate is different, that means that you can sign up for the 100% through the same website. A lot of people want to know what kind of green energy are we buying? The green energy in our program, the mass class one renewable energy certificates, it's managed by Green Energy Consumers Alliance. They used to be called Mass Energy, I believe. I've forgotten their old name. But you can look at their website. They have a map of these specific installations that you know, the slight additional money that we're paying for the green electricity is actually funding these new renewable energy installations. And so the increased demand for green electricity also increases the supply. People also want to know how much extra it will cost. It's, you know, when you look at your bill, it's an easy calculation because the cost difference between the 30% default and 100% green is just over two cents a kilowatt hour in this current contract. So this sample bill was using 439 kilowatt hours that month. You multiply it by 0.021 dollars and it's $9.22 for that month. But what's important to know is use less electricity and you'll pay less. You'll pay less both for the base electricity and for the green electricity. And there's a lot of information on your electricity bill about how your usage varies over the course of the year, either as the bar chart or as the numbers. And there are also programs through Mass Save to, you know, free energy audits, energy assessments. They give you some light bulbs, some power strips. Everybody pays for this program, you know, through a few cents every month on their electric bill. So it's really worthwhile taking advantage of the Mass Save programs. And you may have seen some outreach for the Brookline Green Electricity Program. Lawn signs or an insert in a tax bill. Maybe you've seen us at Brookline Day or at the farmer's market. But it's, this is the program and now it's your turn. It's great to get more people to sign up to 100% green. We find that a lot of people don't even know about this program in the town. So tell all your friends in precinct 11 and glad to share the slide deck with the with the precinct if that's helpful.
Thank you. Fantastic. And yeah, and people can just go to BrooklineGreen.com and if they have their bill, it takes about five minutes to switch over. So if you haven't done it, just go to that link, bring your bill and let your neighbors know and maybe we can send it out to the neighborhood, the link again, a reminder. I think it's gone out before. I think it's gone out before, but it's really easy to do.
Is there a um, just a quick question, how do you want to do questions, Shara?
Sure, go ahead.
Is there like a quick cheat sheet that you guys have prepared? Like, I'd love to share this with a lot of people, but I think the PowerPoint slides are a little dense. Yeah, if people are like, yep, I want to do it, give me the three steps.
Yeah, I, we, the town made those little green and white pump cards that were featured in there, and maybe that's um Kara, if the town still has a bunch of the new ones, is that something that could either be handed out as a PDF or distributed as the actual cards?
Yeah, Jennifer, are you thinking something that you could walk around with as you run into people?
No, I don't run into people anymore. I was thinking like something to attach to an email to friends and just be like, hey, do you know about this? You know, not very complicated.
Yeah, the website would be best than Brooklinegreen.com.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Yeah, it's really quick if you have your bill, there's, you don't really have to do anything, so, yeah.
Yeah. I know, and we've done it, and by we, I mean my husband, so.
Right, but you want to tell other people, yeah, got it, got it.
And we have lots of aggressive marketing out there, so if anybody, I put my information in the chat box. If any of your neighbors are just not sure what they're getting in the mail, just have them call me. Um we've walked through lots of people that are just really unsure these days about what they're receiving in the mail.
One of the reasons for Brookline adopting this was to gi- uh give uh the residents of the town of Brookline a break. There's one place they can go for a trusted program, that's Brookline Green on Energy.
And I I think I'm correct in saying that it's by going, having more people by the power through the town, it gives the town more clout, more negotiating power to get better.
Well, I did, the idea is uh already for Brookline pools all of its purchasing power through this program. So the uh direct energy is able to go to the suppliers and get a better deal. So Brookline's uh basic rate under this deal is less. And then uh part of that additional money is being plowed back into renewable energy.
That wouldn't otherwise be good.
I understand, it also helps keep the rate stable too, for a longer period of time.
Generally, generally, the Brookline Green Energy are many, often is below the uh ever-source rate.
So this. Yeah, the ev- ever-source changes their rates six mo- every, you know, twice a year, every six months. And it's um, you know, it's usually higher in the winter, lower in the summer. And but with the Brookline Green Electricity, the rates are stable over the course of the contract, which this contract is almost three years long. So, you know, there's no way to promise that it's always going to be less or always more. But um, you know, for a small additional payment each month, if you can afford that, especially if you bring down your electrical usage, then it'll be less of a payment each month. But it's really an investment in in our future. By having investing.
I will say this, just just an observation, going to the website, it's not really co-branded as a Brigham Town website, and it's a dot com. And if I were to go to this not on this call with you, I'm not sure I would really believe it was the official, this is the town thing.
Yeah, the website changed recently, I think because of Department of Public Utilities regulations. Maybe Kara can explain that. It used to be when you went to Brooklinegreen.com, you were on a Town of Brookline website.
Yeah, I think it's a great comment, Jennifer, and um we should put the town seal on this new website. We can have our energy brokers do that. And I'm also going to put in the chat box the um if the town website that would then send you there. But for those that aren't nervous, just the the Brookline MA version, I'll put that in the chat box too.
Thank you.
Oh, we have, I see.
I have a question. I have a question, can I ask it?
Sure.
Okay, my question is uh because I didn't know really anything about this, even though I'm a Town of Brookline person and an environmentalist. Um I had a question for you, Diane, and it seems like you, Diane, and Kara. So you're part of a Green Brookline Committee. And I'm wondering a couple of things. One is, do you work alongside, is this just a purely Brookline uh process you're going through? Is this trying to work with other communities as well? Um how do you find out more about that? For example, the reason I'm asking is because, I don't know if you guys heard, for example, East Boston is being uh supposed to be getting this whole electric station, and Waymouth is trying to fight um getting natural gas put in. I'm just wondering, do you guys work with other towns, or is what you're talking about very just purely Brookline?
So two, I was gonna give two parts of that answer. What I was talking about tonight is just Brookline. But these, this type of program, Boston's just started last month. Other cities and towns have it, Newton, et cetera, et cetera. And then I don't work for the town of Brookline, but I volunteer for Mothers Out Front. And Mothers Out Front is very much on top of all of these, or many of these issues, the Springfield biomass, the Waymouth compressor station. So we are working with some of these other cities and towns. But the type of program that Brookline has is just, you know, by municipality. So other cities and towns in Massachusetts have that, and I'll let Kara answer too.
Yeah, and I'll just add that um both at the volunteer level, at the advocacy level, as well as um other professionals that are in other municipalities, there's kind of meetup groups that are comparing notes all the time. So for example, we're part of a um Metro Mayor's um climate working group where I'm meeting with colleagues from all over the region um once or twice a month, kind of comparing notes, so.
And I would add in that this is a Brookline meeting about things that are Brookline concerned. But myself, as the membership and organizing person in elders' climate action, we've been to Waymouth, we know about the East D substation, we're publicizing that stuff all the time. But this is Brookline right now.
I can just interrupt, I'm sorry, we we really do need to move on to the Driscoll project because that's also going to take quite a bit of time. Um and I think we have some links in the chat, and we certainly can circulate those as well.
But special thank you to Kara and Diane for joining us to discuss this, we really.
Yeah.
Thanks for inviting us.
Thank you, thank you so much.
It's just good to make the connections. I mean, we're not that large a group on the Zoom, so it's very nice to actually make these connections. And then later on, we can, I'm just looking at like a little web, it's like, oh, talk to this person, talk to that person. So it's just nice to meet all of you.
And as Larry noted and Jonathan noted, I mean, we're really working hard here to to build these connections, and it's even harder now um without being able to meet in person, but there are opportunities for Zoom. So if there are topics that people are interested in spending more time on, or other guests we want to invite, we're happy to work to facilitate more of these meetings. And so um that's actually a good transition to to Driscoll, which I'm not sure we're going to be able to really cover in detail right now. But we'd like to give uh David LaScolier and maybe um Sue Dickoff, if if she's still here, a chance to just give us a a brief update on what's going on with Driscoll, like if people can ask a few questions. And then maybe we'll have to devote a a separate meeting to that if there's a lot of interest in the community and a lot of questions. Um and then, you know, reach out to more people who would be interested in that topic. Um so let me turn it over to David, and again, is is Sue still on the call? I'm not sure.
I'm still here.
Okay, great.
Okay, so let me turn it over to Susan, she's the chair of the committee. I'm on the committee, but he's.
No, no, David, go ahead, I'm happy to fill in, you'll probably be much shorter than I will.
Well, I I will be very short, there are two main points at this point. Uh the actual commencing construction date has been pushed back a bit. And uh we're gonna get mechanicals on the roof rather than wells under the ground. Those are the two main things. It's on budget, I believe, um or close to budget. And uh the schedule's been pushed back a bit, and uh but they uh project still expects to finish on time. That's all I'm gonna say, I'll leave Susan, she has more of the details.
Hey, can you just say what mechanicals on the roof versus what?
Versus wells, the the hope was that we could do it with geothermal wells, which is more efficient. But it's going to be two million dollars more expensive, and that's beyond the amount that's been out allotted by the town for Driscoll. So uh Plan B was the, to put it, to put it on the roof, which is a a cheaper way, a little bit less efficient, but it's still fossil fuel free.
Okay, and Sue, if you can give us a little, a little more.
Uh sure, um so as everyone knows, uh Driscoll is a a beautiful place in terms of hearts and um community, but it's also uh probably has the worst physical plant um in the district. Um and until COVID, we had um the most growth percentage-wise. Um and so a new, a new school was absolutely needed. Um the idea at the time was that we were going to do this new school in addition to a ninth elementary school. Um but there is no ninth elementary school, and so it is ju- it's just this one at this point. Um the good news is enrollment from from this perspective, um is that enrollment is sort of right sizing to the buildings. Um it's bad news for a whole bunch of other reasons, but um for the building perspective, it's um it it's sort of a fortunate thing. Um I think everyone's really excited about the design. Um it's much more, there's a very clear middle school area um on the top floor. Um much better dedicated science spaces that are safe for science, um beautiful art spaces. Um there's a beautiful community space, and so probably most exciting is it increased the outdoor square footage um of what's actually usable green space. Um so, and it did that by adding a layer to the building. So there's lots, you know, lots going on. Um the idea is that uh they will at least have the full playground uh online until the end of the school year. Um and they're still trying to figure out a date when the fences will go up um around the field. Um and there'll be two years of construction um for the building, um at which point we'll move in, and then there'll be a little bit after that uh for the field to seed up, to take seed and everything. So if there are specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um but the, as David said, the, it was supposed to be completed in May of twenty-three, and now it's scheduled to be completed in August of twenty-three. Um but other than that, um you know, things are sort of moving forward. The only, the only thing that is tricky, as he said, is the geothermal wells. Um we're trying to figure out what that could look like. So um at any rate, hopefully gives a quick overview.
Wow, that was amazingly brief for a huge, huge project. Um so that gives us a little time for some questions. I see questions about the new start date and questions about the design. I know that people were concerned about windows and some other, Francesca, if you want to. She's a Zoom expert. Um okay, David, David, go ahead. So David's saying that the, it's starting in May. And then um Francesca, did you want to speak to the, uh ask the questions about design? Or Sue, do you want to speak to some, the design considerations?
I just wanted to say, and I've said it many times, I wrote a letter in July, a hundred and forty people signed a petition based on some concerns we had. But I mentioned that there was no teachers invited onto the design plan. There were teach, there were parents, there were architects, no teachers were invited on. There still were no teachers invited on. The designs do not take into consideration what teachers would think would be best. So there's not time now, clearly, but I just want to say in many ways that teachers were left out of the design process. And um I have many concerns about it and feel that the whole process was done in a way that left many people out.
Yeah, I mean, I, Francesca, I have so much respect for you as a teacher um and as an educator. Um I disagree with most of what you just said, um in the sense that um teachers have been all the way through, included in the process, and they're sort of, if I'm happy to send around, if it's helpful, sort of, there are probably four, five, six pages of changes that got made as a result of, you know, working closely with educators on different pieces of the building. So I'm happy to send that through. Um but at any rate, I um I still have nothing but respect for you as a, as an educator and as a, as a fellow community member.
I I think maybe we would have a separate conversation around that. A- asking people like in this kind of situation, what they would think about a design is very different than having somebody on the design process, so we can talk about that later.
Yeah, no, I, so you're absolutely right, but I would say that the teacher educators had far more input into the design process of the building than the building committee has. The building committee meets once a month for about an hour and a half, and there are eighteen people on it. That there've probably been about eight to ten full days spent with different groups of educators and the architects drawing and redrawing um different parts of the building. So I think it's a, it's a completely different process. But at any rate, there there are educators on there, I mean, the principals on there, but I I hear you, I I definitely hear you.
Sue, can you tell us about fora for people to learn about what's going to happen between now and when things start? Are there um o- other opportunities for people to, you know, ask questions and more broadly and learn more?
Absolutely, and there's um online on the Driscoll Building Committee website. Um there are all of the different documents. Um and the last community forum is probably the the best one that kind of goes soup to nuts through it, and there's a, there should be a video recording up there in addition to the slides. Um David, I'm on my iPhone right now, if you have, if you can pop the, that into the chat, or someone can, um or I can email it around afterwards. Um but there's a, there's a little fly-through um the building and lots of slides on there. And I think the next community forum is probably going to be in about a month or so. Um but the last one was pretty comprehensive to to catch up, and there are a lot, there are probably, I don't know, forty or fifty documents um from earlier in the process, if folks want to see the evolution of it as well.
And I know I always talk about the email list, but um and I know that this stuff is available on the website. Um but I do think like pushing that stuff out to people so they just know that it's available could join and could listen in and could look at it. And if everybody can also just, you know, a plug for your downstairs neighbor, your next-door neighbor, your babysitter, you know, make sure everybody uh knows that we have these different ways to connect, it would be good. Um because then we can get the word out more easily, and people don't feel like, oh, there were all these meetings, and I didn't know about them, and I, you know, I I didn't know I could find out, so.
That's a great point, and actually, there is a, the town has a Driscoll Building Project list served. So if you go to the Building Project page and you put your email in there, they will push out messages to you about once a month, when there are new documents posted, or when there's a new meeting coming up, um the following usually gives you about a week's notice. So there's definitely a way to put your email in and then get those push um push requests.
All right, so I think at this point, um we're, we're ready to open up for any other updates or topics people want to hear about. And then um any ideas for, if there's a topic that we don't have expertise right now, or we don't have answers on, that you would like to see covered in another community forum um where we could discuss something more in-depth, or we could do, do the research or get the right guests to come in. Um and I just want to invite, there's a, you know, some people who've been speaking a bunch, and there's some people who haven't spoken at all. So if there's anybody who hasn't spoken, um please go ahead. I, oh, and Lisa, you were going to give a a brief update as well about zoning, sorry, I forgot about that.
Okay, uh well, this is just off the top of my head, and uh and if um anyone who has more information wants to uh pipe in, please do. So um a a state bill passed called the Housing, Housing Choice was part of the Governor's Economics Bill, and it will make it easier to build more housing and affordable housing. So uh the details of that bill, I think, have to be more elucidated to the town for them to understand what it is they they can do. But given that, uh the a a warrant article passed, Article thirty-four, um which called for uh the town to look into uh ways to um to build more housing and um and to build, to make more affordable housing. So they're going to be hiring a um a consultant to uh lead this effort. And um so that's good news, and I hear the Planning Committee is very busy, so there's not going to be any warrant articles about um about housing, uh at least from Brookline for everyone, to give the Planning Department a chance to do what they need to do. And um and and then one thing I want to say is I I, so I'm I'm a relatively new uh town meeting member. I am very impressed by all the people who work so hard to make this town run. It is a almost a totally volunteer effort, the select board hardly gets any money, and they're constantly meeting. And there's always all these meetings, uh and Dave Pollack's on the Advisory Committee, and Ken Lewis does a lot. And I'm just blown away by how much time is uh is 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 necessary by people who volunteer to to do this work. But it it, but not everybody can volunteer, and there is an effort to come up with a charter for uh uh to consider um how to make Brookline a city, which uh has its pluses, particularly when you see how much time is required to get this town working. And it's really older people who have means, who can afford to to uh to do this effort. So that's, that's another effort that's going on. And um and then one more thing I just wanted to mention is that there's an effort to make Colchester Kent uh an area there uh a historic zone, because there are a lot of huge, huge, beautiful houses. because there are a lot of huge, huge, beautiful houses there and they don't want them knocked down. But, um, I would like to see them converted to multi-unit housing with, um, maybe funds put into an, uh, an affordable, uh, the, the housing trust. And, uh, but that, that effort's going to wait till another, the following town meeting. So that's all I have to say. And if anybody wants to add David Pollack or somebody else wants to add, be my guest.
Thank you, Lisa.
I, I put a link in the chat, uh, to a briefing on the Housing Choice Bill. It's on Tuesday morning in a week, nine days from now. Uh, by the, by the, uh, state, a Zoom briefing.
Oh, that's cool. Okay, I'm going to get that.
And we'll save the chat as well so we can share those links afterwards. Are there topics, neighborhood questions, upcoming events?
I, I would love if we could make the, um, the tape of this available. It's, you know, I, I think a lot more, this is a great size group, but there are, you know, loads and loads more people who might be interested. Um, and I, I just want to echo Lisa, like, the amount of work that goes into all of this volunteerism in town is astounding, but also pretty narrow and, you know, kind of uncoordinated. Like, is it strategically what we would do, who, what, who we would elect and what they would prioritize? And I, I think that question of is this the right form of government is a really interesting one. And maybe that's a debate or a conversation we could help facilitate since there's work going on on that. I, and I, I, I mean, I have a point of view, but I'm not thinking of this as an advocating gathering, but rather a, an informational session.
Thanks. It was requested that we record this and we're doing it. We'll put it on the Facebook group and send it out to the, to the email list. But even that, I think you're right, doesn't hit everybody. So.
What, but what do you think about like facilitating some kind of platform for that discussion of what the, um, the Brookline City petition people are doing? And I'm sure there are people who would speak strongly like, no, we should stay at town forever.
Sure, we could invite, we could invite the better, what's it, the Better Brookline, what are they called? A Better Brookline, thank you. Yeah, we can invite them to come present and I think that could be very interesting. Um, I also see that David Lowe is, uh, looking for partners to help, uh, put together a community garden to raise money that could be given to the food bank. So if you're interested in that or have ideas for that, you can reach out to David Lowe.
That's much to raise money. Just I thought, you know, there's sunshine and we can probably build a frame easily. I think there is, there was some funding when the idea came around. There seemed to be a lot of interest. I haven't pursued it. If there's interest from others. It shouldn't be too hard to do. And, um, and I, I had images of the food supply being interrupted early, you know, last year around. That hasn't really happened, but still it's nice to have local food and it's something to slowly bring, bring us together, uh, at, at a safe distance in a local spot to do something good for the town. So.
Um, and we had a question about the crosswalks and I'm, uh, unfortunately, we did not hear back from Todd in time for this meeting to update on the crosswalks, but as soon as we have more information, we'll share that. And then, um, I forgot to ask Ken, who still has his hand raised, sorry, about the 45 Bartlett Crescent project. Do you have an update on that?
Uh, not beyond what I sent everyone. I just, uh, I downloaded the site plan and the, um, other materials from the developer's link. And there's a, a public, uh, discussion on that on March 1st at 7:30. Um, it is a currently, uh, a two-story commercial building. That's about 7,000 square feet and they're proposing a 34,000, uh, square foot, um, multi-family building of condominiums, uh, 28 condominiums with, uh, part of the building would be three stories and the other part would be four stories. It's kind of wedged in between that new, uh, apartment and, uh, some other houses in Brookline. So I don't, I have a real clear feel for it. One thing I did notice is that they have two and three bedroom units, but they have less than one parking space per unit, which I thought was an interesting, an interesting ratio, uh, certainly lower than what would be typically required under Brookline zoning ordinance.
I received a letter about it. Just, I didn't even read it all. It was right before this meeting. But talked about it being a fairly green building. So the low parking seems to fit with that. They're going to have, um, car chargers and solar on the roof. It's a bigger discussion, I guess, about what the size of it would be, the impact.
And it's complicated right there on the corner because it's right on the border between Brookline and Boston. My parents live right there. And so I know there's been some issues about like construction issues. And then Brookline isn't really taking responsibility because it's happening in Boston. But I can't really complain to Boston because it's affecting Brookline. So, um, definitely something that we should.
You, you, I'm a happy Walker.
We should be looking into. Are there other questions? All right. Well, I think, um, I think the main lesson is that we, we need to keep each other updated. There's a lot of different pieces here and we'll, we'll send out as we have updates on, on any of these things. Shauna, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Uh, I'm missing anything on our agenda?
I don't think so. I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything there that, that. Um, I do think, um, we can certainly kind of have more of these in the future and more focused if necessary.
Or more social. We could, you know, play Pictionary and charades if people are getting, getting cooped up at home. Um.
I guess the only thing I'd add is town elections are coming up. And there, there's going to be some competition for some of the bigger seats. Um, the town moderator who's been moderator for.
27.
Lord knows how many years, a very, very, very long time, is not running again. And there'll be two new candidates. At this point, there's two candidates, um, running for town moderator. And select board, there are two seats that are, um, up for reelection. Bernard Green and Nancy Heller. And there's going to be, from what I'm hearing, at least three other, um, candidates who are going to be running for those seats. So it's, it's going to be an interesting competitive election and worth paying attention to. The, the people running for those positions all have very, very different perspectives about the town and, and how things should be moving forward. So keep your eyes open for all of that. Interesting.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. We will see you in the neighborhood. Oh, Ken, you want to add something? I can't tell if Ken's waving or just hanging out in front of town hall. No, okay.
Wa- waving good evening. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you to everybody. Thanks for joining and, um, we'll, we'll be in touch on the list and we'll send out all that stuff. And thanks to the community members, the town meeting members and, and you guys all put my daughter to sleep successfully. So. Thank you.
Thank you for organizing it.
Thank you. It's nice to see everyone.